Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the curriculum workshop of the Downer, uh, it's a special meeting and curriculum workshop of the Downers Grove Grade School, District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. Here at O'Neill Middle School. This meeting is being live streamed for the public on the District fifty eight's YouTube channel. Melissa, we please go roll.
Number Doshi.
Here.
Number Ellis.
Here.
Number Hannes.
Here.
Number Harris.
Here.
Number Olchik is absent. Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment, please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in the basket on the table. Is it over there? All the way at the end of the table there to my right. And I have allotted thirty minutes tonight for public comment. All right, we're going to go ahead and kick this right off with our curriculum workshops. So I'd like to welcome Liz Earhart.
Good evening, board. Welcome to our spring or end of winter, early spring curriculum workshop. We have a pretty packed agenda for you with lots of great information and learning to happen this evening. We're going to start with a presentation for ELA. We are going to talk about the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. We're going to discuss our pilot experience for ELA resources. And then we are going to provide the board with a recommendation for adoption. After that, we will go into some staff presentations in a couple of classrooms here at O'Neill Middle School. We will hear from our dual language program as well as an update on our year one implementation of writing workshop. And then we will have some committee updates. And we will discuss our outdoor education field trip for sixth grade. At this time, I would like to welcome Mrs. Christine Priestor up, who is going to talk to you about the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan, as well as give you an update about our ELA committee work and our resources that we have piloted.
Good evening. Today, I'm going to introduce you to the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. This plan just came out at the end of January and is a result of legislation from last June that asked ISB to enhance literacy instruction across the state. This plan is built on a solid foundation of research, research, and is guided by the values that you see on the screen. These values boil down to equity in that every learner across the state, no matter where they live or what group they belong to, whether they're an advanced learner or learner with special needs or multilingual learner, they all deserve to have the code of reading unlocked for them while they're in their K twelve education. The plan has three major sections that are that align with these three goals. The first goal focuses on student instruction. The second on professional learning, both for teachers that are currently teaching and for our pre-service teachers, really our next generation of teachers, and what their teacher prep programs will look like. The third goal focuses on leadership, empowering every leader in a school district and school to support literacy instruction in their building. Tonight, I'm going to focus in on goal one on student instruction. That's really going to be our first goal that we tackle in the in the district. And I'm going to highlight a couple of key components from goal one in student instruction. The first is ISB has defined the seven components of literacy instruction that should be in a district's literacy plan. You can see them represented on this slide. They are oracy, phonological awareness, word recognition, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and writing. In goal one, ISB defines what each of those areas of literacy are for us. They give a brief overview and then talk about what the instructional focus should be for every age of learner, from our younger learners, all the way through high school. It also gives every district considerations they for multilingual learners, learners with special needs, advanced learners, and also considerations for assessment. How are we looking for student proficiency in these areas of literacy? It also outlines intervention supports that districts should consider to support students that aren't at proficiency in these areas for their grade level. Each component also has a section that defines evidence-based practices that align to these components, and then not evidence-based practices that aren't aren't shown to increase literacy and development in that area, but all too common happen in classrooms across the state. In goal one, there are also additional sections that include handwriting, twenty first century skills, so looking at how much literacy instruction is done digitally versus print and what that recommendation is. Guidance for newcomer program in multilingual education, specialized looking at how we're supporting our specialized educational needs, MTSS outlining what should an assessment plan look like for literacy and intervention. Truly, this plan is is comprehensive. Everything that should be happening around literacy instruction in a school district. ISB has some next steps to hit and from the legislation. Right now, there's not deadlines for districts to make alignment to or demonstrate that alignment. But ISB does have some deadlines over the next couple of years to support districts in moving towards this plan. The first, we're expecting the following items by July one, a template for school districts to analyze their alignment to this plan. They are, you've heard me talk before about the ISB curricular evaluation tool that we use for our review process. They're making one specific to literacy that follows the structure of the one before, but will further help districts make that alignment. And then also they're coming out with stakeholder overviews. Not everyone's going to sit down and read the two hundred page plan, but they're making some shorter overviews for for teachers, community members and districts to utilize. By next January, ISB is going to outline what some training opportunities or what training should look like, specifically focused on that goal two of that professional learning. And then by twenty twenty six, ISB has some deadlines for higher ed or teacher prep programs, looking at that content area of tasks. How are we ensuring every educator has the literacy knowledge to pass that test and go into service as a teacher? Here in District fifty eight, as we focus in on goal one and student instruction, our next step really have two two large points. The first is we're going to spend time on those seven components of literacy. Those are all those are familiar to us, but this this plan asks us to take a deep dive into analyzing our day-to-day practices and make sure we're in that alignment. So we've already begun this work with administrative team and also the ELA committee, and we'll be finishing that work this school year and then rolling into next school year, bringing that learning to all of our staff. The other portion that we're going to dig into is specifically those evidence-based instructional practices. We're really at a great time here in District fifty eight as we're in a curricular review. We're looking at resources that are aligned with these practices. And so as we look to any potential adoption, pairing that with professional learning to ensure those evidence-based practices don't stay on the page, but they're alive in the classroom and making sure we're making that shift. If if there's any not non-evidence-based practices that are happening, we're making that ship shift over to the evidence-based one. We've we've actually invested in that letters training this school year for that cohort of forty teachers, resource teachers and reading specialists. And this training is truly been a great resource to equip our specialists with the knowledge, the depth of knowledge to support their colleagues and make those instructional decisions for our students that are struggling most with literacy that are aligned to these evidence-based practices. At this time, I could take any questions about the overall plan or any questions about our next steps in goal one for the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan? So I'm going to roll into next update from ELA. That we're about a year and a half into our curricular review process. Last year, we ended with the following goals that led us to a pilot this year. So we have kind of a three-part pilot. We have a K two foundational skills pilot. We have a K five benchmark twenty twenty two pilot, and we have a six-eight middle school ELA pilot happening this year. I am joined tonight by four staff members that were involved in the pilot and are going to share a little bit more about each of the pilots tonight. For foundational skills pilot, I'm shared by I am here with Diana Springer, who's a first grade teacher at Highland, and also Megan Dupass, who's a reading specialist at El Sierra. To talk more about the Benchmark twenty twenty two pilot, I'm joined by Christina Cardinal, who's a third grade teacher from Bel Air. And to speak to our middle school, that six-eight pilot for ELA, I'm joined by Robin Panico, who's eighth grade teacher here at O'Neill. I can't thank these teachers enough, but also all of our pilot teachers, they'll tell you the numbers. We have quite a few that are involved in piloting new material is not a small task to learn something and implement it well for kids. It's really been a lot of hard work on their part, and I want to thank them for that. No matter how intentional that scope and sequence is or the training, there's a lot of time that goes into to implement it and also give us feedback on how it was for their instruction and for student learning. So I thank them, and I now invite up Diana Springer and Megan Dupass to share about the K two foundational skills pilot.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, so as we begin this journey and this process, we of course started by reflecting on the current research and what's out there right now, specifically the science of reading and compare that to what we currently have in our classrooms already. One thing that we felt a strong need for was a standalone separate foundational skills program to help support our youngest learners in the K through two classrooms. So foundational skills program would be one that teaches students to encode and decode by learning the articulatory gestures that match phonemes and then the graphemes that match those phonemes. We were extremely excited to see what was out there in this area. This is something that we've been looking forward to putting into place in our classrooms. So we looked at a lot of different programs. And through that selection process, we found too that we felt very confident in bringing back to our classrooms and bringing back to our kids. The first one is UFLY, which comes from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. And we began our year with that one piloting it through August through October. It's a very systematic and explicit program. There's decoding and encoding embedded in every single lesson. It's a fast-paced lesson, and every second of each lesson is used in such a meaningful way. New skills are taught very thoroughly, but then are also reviewed consistently in its subsequent lessons. And it's no frills, but does offer a lot of hands-on experience for the kids. They're moving magnetic tiles, they're writing on dry erase boards, they're reading out loud, and so it's an engaging program for them. The other program that we decided to pilot was Bridge to Reading. We just wrapped that one up not too long ago. We were originally drawn to this program because it comes from Hagerty, which is a familiar name to us. We've been using the Hagerty phonemic awareness program for a really long time in the district, and we're excited to see what it offered now that it had added a phonics component to. The materials were really engaging for students, included games and sound stories. There was also a lot of word building involved in this program as well. I'll personally say my first graders had such a great time. I told them they get to help make a big decision for the whole district. So there was a lot of buy-in and a lot of ownership. And I told everyone who walked into our classroom. So I was very proud, and it was a really worthwhile experience to be able to pilot both of these programs.
So UFLY was the one that our group really enjoyed and had a lot of success with. There's quite a few different components, a lot that were mentioned. You're going to see a video of the different components. But real briefly, it goes through phonemic awareness, which is where the teacher will go k at, and the students say cat. There's a visual drill where the students identify letters and sounds, auditory drill, a blending drill. So if you think back to like when you were younger and your teacher said sounded out, a lot of that. Diana mentioned the articulatory gesture. So now we're teaching the kids like what your mouth looks like when we're saying those sounds, which is super important. It also helps those kids with their speech. There's letter formation, spelling, reading, and word work, and it's also multisensory, which is really nice. Every skill is built upon the other. So there's a real nice scope and sequence. Nothing new is introduced that the students haven't. There's one new thing introduced and nothing that will blindside the students. It just keeps building. One lesson takes two days. So this year, I was fortunate enough to my for my principal to let me teach it in the classroom. Typically, I pull students out. So I was in kindergarten every day for a half hour, still am, teaching twenty-five students. And the growth has been like, it's just been amazing. Typically, at this time of the year, when I I'm pulling students out also during for a half hour, but typically I'm pulling with myself and another person about eight students. And right now, we're down to two. So the growth, I just, I can't even begin to describe how wonderful it's been. The students are actually reading three and four letter words like consistently. Typically, it's, you know, we're still working on sounding out three three-letter words. And yeah, the other the other thing I just wanted to say is, a lot of times, like, there's always kids in kindergarten that are readers. This year, the amount that are already readers and are going to be leaving kindergarten as readers is just really great. So really excited. So here's a quick little video of me teaching it. So enjoy. So here's a quick little video of me teaching it, so enjoy. Thank you. Christina Cardinal is going to come up and share about our K-five benchmark twenty twenty-two pilot.
So for our benchmark twenty twenty-two pilot, we've had forty-seven classrooms be able to pilot this curriculum. Um, and that's classrooms throughout the whole district that are K through five. Um, I know Diana highlighted the Ufly, which is just K through two, so it's cool that we've been able to experience benchmark twenty twenty-two throughout um multiple grades. The first thing I want to talk about is the similarities to the current benchmark twenty eighteen. For the past five years, we've um used benchmark twenty eighteen as our form of ELA curriculum. The similarities between the twenty twenty-eight version and twenty twenty-two version are that the knowledge builds throughout um the ELA curriculum and the social studies and science curriculums. So for example, in third grade, our ELA curriculum started with animal adaptations. Um, and our first unit in science was life science. So students were able to really access their background knowledge and use terms that they've used in both their reading and their science. Which is really great for them to make those connections and use different terms, scientific terms that are a little bit tricky for them to understand. Um, but also be able to use that in their reading. Um, another example is government, um, that in our social studies curriculum comes a little bit later. So we're able to preview those topics in our ELA curriculum so that when we get to it in social studies, the students are able to kind of use what they already know. Um, and it goes a little bit quicker when we're talking about those more challenging topics too. Um, in addition to that, I've noticed that it even aligns with some of our second step in SCL curriculums. Um, in ELA, we did a unit about comparing points of view. And in SCL, right now, we're talking about empathy and kindness, where students are understanding how different people need different things in order to make a friend or need a friend. Um, and the texts have stayed pretty rigorous and complex, which is good, they're engaging, the students are excited to read them. Um, some of our favorite things that are new to benchmark twenty-two, twenty twenty-two that have not been in twenty eighteen is that vocabulary instruction. Um, after talking to even more pilot teachers and learning more about those components of literacy, vocabulary is such an important piece to these students, learning um how to read and understanding what they're reading. So a lot of lessons start by previewing some of those bigger words. Um, we just previewed the word delectable in our reading, so that when we come across it in our text, we don't have to take the time to pause what we're doing, to talk about what the word means, to find those context clues. Students already know what that word delectable means because we've previewed it, and now they're able to understand it as we're reading. Um, and we've just really been able to use that component to become better comprehenders of reading. Um, my favorite part has been that word study instruction. When we get to those older grades in three through five, they're not using the same sort of phonics instruction that we just saw in that video. We're talking more about breaking up the word into syllables. And this is something that's um been very important when it comes to the science of reading. Two big components of the science of reading are phonemic awareness and phonics. And for students to be able to know those word patterns so that they can better read the word and so that they can better write and spell the word has been so, so helpful. Um, that's been my favorite part because students aren't just learning how to memorize a spelling list of words, but they're actually able to take the spelling pattern and apply it to their writing as well. Um, the small groups have been a really great addition too. We've gotten new materials for those books, they're a lot more multicultural. Um, this week, we are reading a book in my small group about a kid from Nigeria. And we've read another book about um the setting was in Bangkok. So those two are just su- such great additions to our small group instruction as well. Um, and then the students are able to respond to texts and writing. A lot of our lessons end with um an application. So that it goes through that whole process of the teacher does it kind of as a model. We do it together, they work with partners, and then they're kind of off on their own to apply that knowledge. So with all of this combined, we've just seen a lot of enhancements with that benchmark twenty twenty-two instruction. Thank you.
And then Robin Panico to share more about our middle school pilot.
Hi. Um, we were really excited, we, we're going to try two different curriculums. We looked at quite a few, we've used StudySync in the past. Uh, we decided to pilot Amplify and Common Lit. Um, some of us were familiar with Common Lit, just little tiny components of it that we've used in the past. There are um quite a bit of Common Lit you can access. Um, if you, if you're not subscribed to that or you haven't purchased it, it's a, a lot of it is available to educators everywhere. Um, and Amplify was something really entirely new, it was an online-only platform. And that was, we found really, it was rigorous, the kids, um, especially initially, just, you know, they love to be on those Chromebooks. So um, there, they had these very well-constructed reading and writing kind of activities that covered just kind of a nice diverse collection of literature. Um, it, there were challenges, of course, involved with having the kids online all the time, but they had a vocab uh app that the kids had that they just loved because it was, um, it was like a video game and they, they really learned a lot of words. It was surprising how fast they learn when something's a video game. Um, and then starting in November, we used Common Lit and we looked at it, you know, as a, as Common Lit uh three sixty, which is like the entire curriculum as opposed to, to a piece, another piece that we kind of fit someplace else. Um, and what we liked about Common Lit was that there was a flexible delivery options. We could, it was, we could, you can assign something online so that kids wa- um, you can set it so they have to answer a question before they can move on to the next piece of text. It takes them through different stages in comprehension of that piece of text. Or you can print it out and they can read it on paper. And um, we were surprised at how much by November, the kids were really welcoming of writing something to write something on a piece of paper. And so we really did appreciate the flexibility because there are times when, you know, we just need to, everyone needs to close those Chromebooks and um, it makes working in small groups a lot easier if we're all able to just look at the same piece of text on a piece of paper and read that together. Um, it, like it says here, it's a very rigorous and intentionally designed instruction. Um, the thematic units are really well done. We just finished Twelve Angry Men, which is a play that was written in nineteen fifty-seven, which like maybe that's not super engaging for middle schoolers, but um, it's, they have all these non-fiction aligned pieces of text, like on how our jury system works, what your responsibility is of, is of a juror. Um, you know, what it means to have proof beyond a reasonable doubt. And so we got kind of ready to read this, the story about a trial and um what it meant to be assumed presumed innocent until you were proven guilty. And they were so excited to read it and they were so um engaged in the play. And they, they do love to perform as well, so that was part of it. But it was such a beautifully designed unit. Um, their culminating task, their culminating task is always a piece of writing. So we've, we've done a couple of um literary analysis papers, which is a big deal. We, that's not something we spent a lot of time in middle school doing, but that's what they're going to have to do from now until when they're done being in college, because we're just going to have to learn how to make a claim and support that claim. And so it's great for them to have to do that. The next unit that we're in, they're going to be doing some research. So I love that kind of the end of the unit's not just a test, but it's actually a, a piece of writing that they're going to, it's kind of a more developed um activity. So we did really appreciate Common Lit as well. So they both have a lot of, they both had quite a bit to offer. Um, and we, like I said, we really did enjoy Common Lit because of the flexibility of the, the delivery options. Um, that's all I have to share. Thanks.
Again, I want to thank our um four wonderful teachers for coming this evening and sharing their experiences as well as all of our pilot teachers. It is a big undertaking to have a pilot of this magnitude happening across all of our schools. And we're just really proud of the successes that the teachers have found and that the students have found. Our committee then had some work to do. Once this pilot was underway, we needed to make sure that we were building consensus across the group to make decisions. We reviewed our committee work from the previous year, looked at student achievement data, our implementation data, as well as our curriculum review. Additionally, we reviewed feedback from all the pilot teachers. So we asked them to fill out a survey to tell us what their experience was like. And then the committee took two meetings to look through that pilot experience data and really analyze what the teachers were saying was positive, negative. What are the things that we're seeing our students doing that maybe they weren't doing before? How will this impact our instruction? And then which curricular position our district and each teacher um is given to provide the most intentional and effective instruction for their students? So I am pleased to make this recommendation to the Board of Education for adoption of ELA resources in grades K through eight for implementation starting next school year. We would like to recommend Ufly foundational skills program for our K-two students. Benchmark twenty twenty-two, which would be a K-five core ELA resource. Um, that would include for our three-five students, their word study program, which would be um the K-two foundational skills, it would kind of um be the program that they would be using. And then as well as Common Lit three sixty for our six-eight core ELA curriculum. There are some financial considerations that I want to share with the board. We did give conservative or high estimate initial quotes because we wanted to be sure that we were able to capture what the overall magnitude and cost would be. When we're looking at that K-five benchmark um adoption, the um cost analysis did come in at eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now EL, ELA will be our highest level of um curricular resources because it typically comes with the most pieces. There's a lot that goes into it, we spend the majority of our school day in our ELA um instruction. And so we do recognize that while this is a large um price tag, we know that this is going to be um a lot of our instructional tools that we're using throughout the, um, throughout the school day. This includes all of our physical materials and our online access for six years. When we look at our curricular review process, that is typically when we're ready to start a, a new review, somewhere between that six to eight school years. So we do recognize that while we um anticipate using this ELA um instructional resource for the better part of this upcoming decade, we recognize that there may be a point where we want to review some of our resources again. That six-year access, we can go back and ask for another year or two um to have access to the benchmark twenty twenty-two if it is still meeting our needs at that time. K-two Ufly is approximately one hundred thousand dollars, that is all physical materials. So as long as we choose to use that, those are the materials that we will need in order for this implementation to be successful. That includes our teacher manuals as well as manipulatives for the students, all of those marker boards, all of the um letter boards and magnet letters for our students um to have access to in their classrooms. And then our six-eight Common Lit adoption is um approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is all online access, which is why it is so much lower than the K-five adoption price. So we do recognize that digital materials can be downloaded and printed if needed. We may see an increase in some print costs when we're taking something from a digital platform and printing it for student use. So it is just something to be aware of and we will um maintain a look at that across implementation if it is approved to be adopted. One thing we're very fortunate about right now is we have this really unique scenario where we have the remainder of our ESR funding that we can use to help supplement and support this adoption with the remaining funds coming from district resources. Typically, when we do an adoption um of this magnitude, we may be looking at payment over the course of a couple of years. That would not be the case with this adoption. We would be able to use our remaining ESR funds and then be able to spend next year's curriculum implementation funds in order to um complete the costs. With our next steps of our ELA adoption, what we would need um for professional learning, we would look to have a full day of um K-two foundational skills instruction training on one of our spring institute days. We, on that um spring institute day, we would also have a sneak preview for our three-five teachers of the differences and the changes from benchmark twenty eighteen to benchmark twenty twenty-two. And then we would have a half day for middle school and sixth grade ELA teachers to look at the Common Lit platform and learn about its usage. Then we would look to go into our fall institute days with half-day trainings for all K-five teachers in benchmark twenty twenty-two, as well as another half-day training for our middle school ELA and sixth grade teachers. Our professional learning would then span the entirety of next school year. Um, we would use our professional learning Mondays, any institute days, any opportunities to gather teachers to discuss the implementation of these resources, focusing on unit previews and evidence-based instructional strategies. And we would also look at our coaching cycles and classroom visits, both with our instructional coaches as well as our curriculum coordinators. We really like to get everyone's hands in on what is going on in the classroom so that we can best support our teachers. So that, the next steps would be the recommended materials would go on display at the Downers Grove Public Library as well as in our district office. That would start on Wednesday of this week. And then we would bring a recommendation for approval to the April eighth board meeting with a board memo. Questions, that was a lot.
I was just going to um ask for the, the total cost of the curricular adoption, is that all one? Are we paying that on one, one fell swoop or is that financed over several years?
So we would be able to accomplish this in one um, one payment um because we have some of those remaining ESR dollars to be able to transition that, which is fantastic for us. And then additionally, some of the costs would go to our benchmark vendor, others would, other would go to Ufly vendor and then um Common Lit as well.
And this is, this is a question primarily on the side of what would the cost difference look like, less so about the educational impact? Uh, we have, we have the benchmark twenty eighteen right now. Uh, if we were to stay with that, what would the ongoing cost look like for benchmark twenty eighteen?
So the ongoing cost for benchmark twenty eighteen really would be our online access because we do have the physical materials here in the district. What we found though is that there was so much supplementing going on with our twenty eighteen, specifically in our word study and some of our um literary resources that we were using, that you're supplementing with funds in other places in order to get the maximum instructional um output that you would get from an adoption of twenty twenty-two.
When is the next, so we have benchmark twenty eighteen, I'm assuming these are by years, right? Benchmark twenty twenty-two, is there going to be a benchmark twenty twenty-six, was the next one coming out?
And you know, that is so funny because that is something that I actually was, when I was looking at twenty twenty-two, I'm like, we're already in twenty twenty-four, when does this happen? I do think that this is a very um robust and updated version um aligned to science of reading. I believe that that is why benchmark needed to go from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two so quickly is because there was a lot of research happening with reading instruction and they needed to make sure that their um resource was aligned to those um expectations. So I, while I don't have a, you know, a crystal ball to say when that next um program would come out, I would anticipate that this would be something that could get us through s- several years um up to our next curricular resource adoption and potentially beyond.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering what the typical cycle is for release.
I think the biggest thing that we saw as educators change from twenty eighteen till the present day was the state of Illinois really aggressively pursuing a comprehensive literacy plan. And so I think at, at this point, most districts have to take a step back and say, okay, are these resources aligned to what the state is really asking us to do in terms of literary instruction? And in the two thousand twenty-two benchmark series does align with the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. That was one of my concerns as superintendent as we were going through this. That was one of my concerns as superintendent as we were going through this. You know, we're three quarters of the way through a, a review and pilot materials, and all of a sudden, the state drops this new plan on us. Fortunately for us, uh, we were already headed in that direction. The state was very good to the districts about not keeping it a big secret until it got there. And so, we knew what was coming up ahead. So, we could not only align our pilots to that, um, plan that was coming out, but, but the materials as well.
There was a lot of review and preview of the Comprehensive Literacy Plan, which we were very fortunate to have access to ahead of time.
Did the state in their Comprehensive Literacy Plan provide a short list of curricular materials that they would consider as aligned?
No. So, the state of Illinois stays far away from making curricular resource decisions for local school districts. They like to leave that up to the local, um, district at the local level. So, they will not provide a list, and we would never anticipate that they would provide a list of suggested resources.
Thank you for all this work.
Yeah.
Really, really, really appreciate it.
And again, anytime you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Come to the district office and see the resources. Christine and I would be happy to sit and, and talk through what the pilot teachers have been experiencing in their classrooms.
And then I, I think one final piece to, to roll this up is, um, in budgeting for this. So, we got, we got these expenses, and we got ESSR funds right now, and that works out really well for us. But I know when we started moving down this direction, we really wanted to put a path forward. We were doing regular review. I think we're on a five to six-year, um, cycle right now. What is coming, what's coming next? What's our timeline for this? And then what year would we re-review ELA in?
Sure, absolutely. So, we do have a, a pretty comprehensive, um, curricular review cycle, um, on our website. We will be looking at the potential of a revision just because of what is coming up next. But science is our next review. There really have not been many changes to the NGSS, to science instruction since NGSS came out. So, we don't anticipate an overly robust need to completely revamp our science curriculum. It is aligned at this, um, time to NGSS, and we don't anticipate needing to do another full-scale or large adoption in science. After that, we would go to our math programming. We are going to look at doing our middle school math programming, um, a little early. So, that would actually happen next school year. But again, not necessarily anticipating that we would be doing a large-scale adoption of a new resource, but really making sure that we're aligning our instructional practices, our assessment practices, and the way that we're presenting material to our students.
Thank you. And then I, uh, just from a budgetary standpoint, I think, just to, tell me if I'm right or wrong, the K through five ELA is pretty historically our most expensive piece of curriculum that we're gonna purchase. Is that correct?
I believe that this is the most expensive, um, curricular adoption. However, based on the costs of previous adoptions in ELA, I think it's pretty, um, in line with what we would expect at this time in 2024.
Right. And then so, from a, maybe Kevin, from your perspective, budgeting when we do this, um, obviously, we gotta, there's some ups and downs here. But can we just talk to how we're budgeting for this over the next, you know, five years, decade, two decades, so that we can continue to make sure that we can afford these curriculum purchases?
I appreciate that, and, um, we talk a lot about how we budget for curricular, um, review cycles in FAC as well. And, and there's a lot of parallels to technology devices and, and how we do all of those. So, one of the things that we really strive to do is, um, in each budget, setting aside a dollar amount for professional development and for curricular resources that would match what we call a typical curricular purchase, like a mathematics, a science, or a social studies. Knowing that you could very well have some off-years, and in those off-years, you save for your bigger curricular purchases. Without ESSR, we would more than likely be recommending that we spread this over two fiscal years just because it, it is such a big, um, you know, chunk of, of, of a budget. And realistically, you know, setting aside a million dollars for a curricular, or a curricular review isn't possible in our normal budget. So, we spread ELA out for two years. But for others, each year, you know, we target $400,000 to $500,000 in a budget to, to make sure. Because what we don't want to do is just spend ESSR funds and then figure it out six or seven years later when the next ELA comes up. Same thing that we do with, uh, technology. So, in those off-years where you might not have that big purchase, that gives us an opportunity, you know, in technology to catch up on infrastructure. In curricular review, it might give us an opportunity to correct or catch up on professional development and some of those other things. So, basically, setting aside, you know, typically $400,000 to $500,000 in a budget, um, so that we can always stay ahead. We don't want to get into a situation where we were, um, you know, 10 to five years ago in that period where we were financing curriculum and doing all those things. So, we've really learned our lessons, uh, from previous years in, in being intentional about setting aside, uh, those dollar amounts. One of the things that Todd has made sure that he's doing is, you know, being very keenly aware of the curricular review cycles when they're in there and how to make sure that we're budgeting accordingly.
The, the five-year plan that the board, you know, sees in spring, we include those tech plans, those tech schedules.
I know that we see a lot of that when we're talking in FAC. I just want to make sure we talk that out because when we talk about using ESSR funds, those are going away. And we want to make sure that we're building ourselves a sustainable, um, path forward, you know, in, in six or 10 years from now, when we might be looking at, um, a curricular program that is much more expensive than, than even like Common Lit where we're looking at, you know, less than $100,000. Well, uh, there's no more questions.
I'm sorry, just one more question about the ESSR funds. In terms of, like, a potential trade-off of using ESSR funds to do this rather than spraying, spreading the cost out over two or three years, is there, um, a trade-off or a sacrifice that we're making that we could be using those ESSR funds for next year as opposed to this? You know, we've been using ESSR funds for things like having additional interventionists, having additional social work support, this and that. Is there a trade-off that we're gonna lose out on by using the ESSR funds for this next year as opposed to spreading this cost out?
So, not in this case. And, and the reason for that is, um, we don't have the option to spend ESSR dollars after this school year. So, we wouldn't have the opportunity. We've already sat on that, uh, you know, for, for an extra year with those ESSR funds, and, and we specifically targeted this curricular adoption, uh, with that. I would love to tell you that we could spread those out over the next three to four years to continue addressing learning loss and things like that. Unfortunately, ESSR funds must be spent by the end of this, uh, fiscal year.
So, if we adopt this, if we're kind of buying this this year, then that, we can use the funds for that as opposed to?
Correct. That, that's exactly correct. But one of the things I want to highlight, and I think Megan did a really good job in the presentation, is talking about how these new materials can really help address the learning loss for kids that might not be there yet. You know, some of the information we're getting from our pilot teachers, especially at the younger ages with foundational skills, is really exciting, hearing that less kids need interventions. That should really help address some of that learning loss. And while as a district, we've certainly caught up in, in our way ahead of, well, I shouldn't say way ahead, but ahead of pre-pandemic levels, we do recognize that there are still students who aren't quite there. And so, we're hoping that these materials will continue to bridge that gap in addition to some of the other things. Now, with some of the things that we have found success, utilizing ESSR funds, the interventionists are a, a great example. I know that we, we talked about this. We are still examining our overall budget as we talk about staffing, and Justin will talk about staffing, um, next board meeting. We're still targeting, you know, are there ways to keep some of those positions that are addressing learning loss and maybe doing without some other things if we still feel that those are valuable and meeting those needs? So, uh, more to come on that, but certainly, um, that question is a good one because that's exactly what we're reviewing right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just, just a comment to say thank you for all. I know that there's a lot of meetings and curricular councils and things that go into this. And back when I sat in the audience, we were far, far, far away from, I would never have imagined we would be here now, but so I'm very excited to see that it's not a set-it-and-forget-it type of situation and that you're continually, and there's a, there's a path and a, a calendar, if you will, to be looking at these things. And, um, it's done with fidelity, so I really appreciate that. And while that is a big price tag, um, it's not like, it's not like everyone's operating in a vacuum. There's, there's communication between, you know, we're planning it out fiscally and with the teachers too. So, I appreciate what the work has gone into all this. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, just say thank you to all the people that are involved in piloting. I know it's a huge undertaking.
Heavy lift.
Yeah. And we've done a lot of it over the last couple of years. And so, to be so quickly back into this first review cycle after finally finishing, um, the full cycle, getting through all of ours, I know it was a heavy lift, so I really, really appreciate it. And I, we see the enthusiasm, um, kind of coming out here today, especially, you know, like we got to see the video of the kids in the classroom. So, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you to our pilot teachers who came tonight across the district.
Liz, I think one more.
Other shout-out, Justin, for look what you started.
Absolutely. At this time, we are going to go into staff presentation. So, we have, um, two rooms that we are going to count off the group. If you are a one, you are going to start in room 125 in the dual language. Justin, 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 we'll do it. And then there is, um, and then anyone who is a two is going to go to room 108 for school-wide writing. We do have some other staff members who are going to be sharing their experiences with you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, welcome everybody back to the room. Let's keep going.
I do want to say thank you to our staff members that presented on school writing and our dual language program. We couldn't have better just efficacy for our students in having our staff present the things that they're doing in their classroom. So we're just so grateful to them.
At this point, we are going to do some curricular committee updates. So I will invite Mrs. Preister back up and then we will hear from Dr. Gajewski and Mrs. Kristobal about some other curricular updates.
All right, well, I want to thank our teachers and our coaches that were in the writing room tonight. You could hear their enthusiasm about their curriculum. And I think this statement that we've inspired more than 3,000 published authors across the district this year really sums up what we've provided to our kids. Being able to help them produce writing pieces that are aligned to their purpose and for audiences has really been a motivator in their enjoyment of writing this school year. I have partnered with the coaches this year to provide over 42 hours of professional learning, about seven for every grade level. But I want to thank them for their partnership and truly thank you for supporting our Professional Learning Mondays. Without them, implementing a curriculum or with them implementing a curriculum is just so successful as we're able to dive into a unit, go and teach it, come back, reflect, talk about what we do next time and go into our next unit again, preparing our teachers to be the most successful that they can be in the classroom. In terms of the writing committee, we have just a couple of tasks this school year we're diving into. The first is to gather feedback from our staff for how our first year of implementation is going. We will be reviewing this feedback on May 1st to make any small changes to the scope and sequence and then to guide future professional learning as we grow into this curriculum over the next few years. We also have been working on our content for those grade level overview pages on the website for our community. And we'll be getting those up in May after our last revision in May as well. I want to thank you for your support of writing. Over, I think it's been five years we've been on this journey of enhancing writing instruction in District 58. And I'm just truly inspired to the work our teachers are doing in the classroom with our students this school year. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I will be speaking to Gifted as well as MTSS. The two of them really coincide quite a bit with the work that both of the committees are doing. So as you know, our Gifted Committee, the makeup is quite diverse. We have a lot of different perspectives of our staff between administrators, psychologists, specialists, teachers, general education teachers. I have a list up here of what the committee's been working on. I've updated you throughout last year and this year. This is not a fully comprehensive list. I could only list so much in here. You can see a picture on the bottom left, a couple of pictures of the students in the Gifted classrooms and some of the units and the explorations that they're working through. The bottom right is a group of us who presented at the Illinois Association for Gifted Children earlier in the year. And then the top photo there, we have our committee who attended a doable differentiation by Jan Kaisi last year. This year, they've been digging through a book study with that, presenting at our grade level meetings and then presenting to each other. So the committee with all of the work that they've been doing, looking at standards, evaluating different models to meet the unique needs of our neighborhood model schools. They've been digging into social-emotional learning, twice exceptional students, our criteria, and then also just professional learning in general too. So a lot of work that's been done there and thinking about what can this program model continue to do for our students. So this is a proposal that was shared last year with you. And this proposal was what the committee wanted to map out how we could roll out the recommended model of bringing students to the home school and keeping students to the home school. And that really came from a lot of research that the committee did for various districts similar to ours, what their model looked like, but also some surveys and feedback from students, staff and families as well. So you can see here, we were looking at 2024, phasing in first with fourth grade, having the fourth graders at a home school model. And then the consecutive years would be fifth grade and then that natural transition when sixth grade goes to middle school. Concurrently, the committee is working on our curriculum. How do we take a full day curriculum that they're receiving right now and bring it back to a five-day model? So students would be receiving their instruction five days by staff that know them and know them very well. And their teachers know them very well right now too, they're gifted teachers also. But how do we bring them back where through that MTSS model that I'll talk about that they really embraced by all of the staff in the building? So they're working on that. For middle school, they would like to bring in some additional content areas. I think naturally our elementary model does incorporate science, social studies steam. For middle school, they'd like to add in social studies and potentially science down the road. For criteria, the committee has shifted that focus for now. We feel like if we're going to make a systematic change, we don't want to make too many changes at once because then it's difficult to evaluate the effectiveness of the change and what are we evaluating? So the committee right now, while we continue to work with that criteria and evaluate that identification process, not altering that right now. So that when students come in for fourth grade at the home-based model, we can really evaluate throughout next year the effectiveness of that model. And then throughout the year, we'll continue to work on that criteria and we'll come back to you if there are any recommendations for change. So in summary, we have here the fourth grade that I mentioned, bringing them back to that home school model. The committee is working on the curriculum so that that would be a five-day instruction that they'll receive in their classroom, approximately 40 minutes or so. It'll allow for some of that scheduling that we'll work through, but also a lot more collaboration amongst the staff who are working with those students. Then the content areas that I mentioned will be embedded and we'll continue to work on that piece for middle school and keep you updated on that. And then MTSS, that multi-tiered systems of support of how are we continuing to meet the needs of our students, not only who are struggling, our high achieving students and our gifted learners as well, the home-based model. And then we'll be able to meet that social-emotional learning needs because our gifted learners do have some unique social-emotional learning needs that we want to make sure to address. And for MTSS, MTSS is truly, it is a foundation of a district. It is how we meet the needs of our students in many facets. It's more comprehensive than RTI, response to intervention. RTI was focused more on our struggling learners, whereas MTSS is looking at, as I mentioned, struggling learners, looking at on-level learners, but also students who need some more of that enrichment. We're not just looking at academics, we're looking at social-emotional learning and behavior as well because it all coincides together. So this is year two of the committee and the committee this year has made some great strides in our district. For our Professional Learning Mondays, we have our data days and there are some systems that have been put in place across all of our buildings. And that includes when we're meeting and having those conversations, the data that we're using. And that is guided through a systematic form that the committee has created and rolled out this year. And then we also have had our tier two and tier three data meetings as well where we're looking at the progress of the students. So we've got some strong tier one systems that are supporting the other tiers as well. The committee also has been looking at attendance. We know that attendance and behavior impacts our students when they're back in school and in the classroom and when they're not in school and in the classroom, how that affects them. So they have also supported our administrators who have then gone to their building positive behavior systems teams to share out with, looking and analyzing that data for behavior and for attendance and how we can support students. So this is another, the image again, just really showing you that umbrella underneath, it is so comprehensive. MTSS, multi-tiered systems support is so comprehensive for how we're supporting students. So it's really about making sure that we have those appropriate supports and that they are based on some evidence and some data that we have on our students. And we're doing that through our Professional Learning Mondays and then along in between those. There, this image, you might see a diamond is one option. There's a lot of visuals floating out there. But the diamond can show you how we look at all spectrums of our students, from struggling to high achieving and beyond. I like this image because it really shows how tier one is that foundation. And again, when I say tier one, I'm speaking academic and social-emotional learning and behavioral as well. So tier one is meeting the needs of 80 to 90% of our students. And then we're using And then we're using universal screeners, we're using our benchmark assessments, we're using ongoing data to see who are the students then who are maybe needing a little bit more support in that tier two. And then up in the highest tertiary, the 1 to 5% average of our students who might need a tier three and much more intense support. So as I mentioned, tier one, it is a foundation of everything with MTSS. It's our universal instruction. We have second staff, we have some ELA resources and other content areas that we talked about here. So then we'll use our ongoing data, as I mentioned, to determine here our tier students. This is where starting to add in a little bit of layer, that core plus more. It might be a student who needs another dose of the guided reading. It might be a student who needs check in and check out, so maybe at the beginning and the end of the day to connect with a trusted staff member and to check in on where they are emotionally. Then we continue to monitor their data and then determine are they ready to move back into tier one or do they need something more intense? And you can see here, by the time you get to tier three, you have added layers, you've added supports and you've added targeted supports. So this is all information that our MTSS committee has shared out with each other and then across the district so that we can now come back and really put this framework into place. It is a lot of balls juggling up in the air. It's a lot of work and it's a really passionate group that is working through this. So we'll continue through our data days to evaluate the data and to progress monitor our students so that we can really meet the needs of all of our individual learners, no matter where they are, continuing to meet them. Another piece is the dual MTSS too, but I'm not going to speak to that because Sandy Cristobal is going to speak more to that. Thank you.
Good evening, buenas noches. It's a pleasure to always be in front of all of you. And I'm very excited because our program is growing, our two-way program is growing. I want to thank Ms. DeLeón for that wonderful presentation she gave to us this evening. I'm excited that we are starting to roll out a new year. And really, our program is growing in its popularity. A lot of our, excuse me, families are in our community are wanting to know more about our program and wanting to know, how can I get into the program? And so our interest form has already been filled out by many families and we're so excited to see our program continue to grow. This year, our team, our teaching staff has worked on MTSS as well. We worked on tier one. So what does it look like for Spanish speakers and English speakers to be taught in one classroom? What gets taught in English? What gets taught in Spanish? What are some factors that we have to take into consideration? Are they Spanish learners? Are they English learners? So this year, we really had the opportunity to talk about tier one for the multilingual student. And so we're excited that we've done a lot of work. We started our tier one process, getting our teachers to understand what are the practices in a bilingual classroom that make our students successful and that are getting us to that pathway to biliteracy. One of our other celebrations is our BPEC. We have our co-presidents in the audience, Mr. Rodriguez and Mrs. Pius. They have really embarked on a great journey the last couple of years in increasing the parental involvement. Tomorrow, we have our, excuse me, Wednesday, we have our BPEC meeting. And we continue to increase in attendance. This group of parents that join us are typical parents that are not necessarily participating in school-wide events yet, but this is an opportunity for them to be involved and to feel like they are represented, the meetings are in their native language. And of course, we also have parents now that are English speakers because they're coming in through a two-way program who are also hearing Spanish as well throughout the presentation. It's really nice to see because even through our BPEC meetings, we have parents learn Spanish and we have parents learn English through our different language activities that we have our parents embarging as well. BPEC also helps parents just navigate the school system. What does it mean, what types of questions should I ask at parent teacher conferences? What does it mean that my child is going on the road to biliteracy? What are some resources in the community that I can attain? And so we're so excited that our BPEC parental involvement is growing. And part of that is also celebrating culture. Each year, we try to put out a big cultural event. Last year, we did Loteria Night. We had such a fun time. Dr. Rosa was in attendance with his daughter. This year on May 4th, we're going to have a piñata night. So our students and their families are invited to create piñatas. So we're not only celebrating their bilingualism, but truly celebrating culture. We want to keep growing. And so the teaching staff is incredible. They are going to embark next year and beyond and they're strengthening our tier one. We are teaching two languages, so we want to make sure that we're curriculum mapping, we have common assessments, that we're planning for biliteracy. We want to make sure that our rollout to our second grade of our two-way program is strong. And we want to make sure that we can continue to increase that parental involvement so that parents feel that their voices are heard and that they can represent their students and understand the program structure. We were also very lucky that our two K-1 two-way teachers, Ms. Lopez and Ms. Cordova, were also invited to pilot with the monolingual staff. They had the opportunity to pilot Spanish language arts and English language arts through Benchmark. One of the differences is that Benchmark has the addition 2023 for Español and 2022 for English. And so our two teachers embarked on this pilot and they truly got to see not only the two resources at hand, but there's a new component which is called the biliteracy planner. And it truly helps identify how to use the two resources and how to map out SLA and ELA so that our students are getting a well-rounded bilingual education. It also helps with what are some things that I have to teach in Spanish and what are some things that I really have to teach in English? So we were so lucky to have them on board in this pilot. We got their feedback as well. We met with them, they were able to come together. And they also are recommending for our dual language program, Benchmark Advance 2022 and Benchmark Adelante 2023. We believe that this curriculum is going to enhance our program because it not only provides great texts, not only does it give opportunities for our students to build their biliteracy, but truly that biliteracy planner is what's going to make the key to help our teachers plan. Whereas before, it was a lot of hours and hours into what should I teach in Spanish, what should I teach in English? This addition helps our teaching staff know through research-based strategies and through research-based adoptions, what needs to be taught in each language. So we are very excited about our two-way program and we can't wait for it to continue to grow. Thank you.
Before I go into the recommendation for outdoor education fees, I do want to reiterate a couple of things that came from our curriculum committee information that was shared with us from our coordinators. So first of all, we are excited that the SLA pilot was part of our two-way program. That was included in the Benchmark quote, so it is not an additional cost to add that. It is something that we planned for in asking for this recommendation. So something that I wanted to share with you. Our dual language teachers will also be part of our foundational skills implementation as well. And they were also part of that cost analysis. Another piece is I want to go back to the slide about our gifted programming and make sure that I answer any questions that you may have about our recommendation for next school year. So Alenny shared that we are going to look at having our fourth grade students identified for gifted education, receiving that instruction at their schools. So that would be something that we would look at current staffing models, working with Justin and seeing which staff are potentially available within the schools and also using our current gifted teachers in order to support that instruction while recognizing that we don't want to make too many changes at once, as Alenny had shared. So we are going to pause on some of our criteria changes because we want to see if the implementation in the school-based model is really doing what we expected to do versus also changing the criteria or the evaluation process and not being sure which of those was an indicator of success or potential challenges. So that's why we're kind of backing up on the criteria identification. It is absolutely still part of our plan to have an analysis of that in next school year while then planning for our fifth grade implementation hopefully in that following year and then looking at our middle school model when we move our sixth graders here over to our middle schools. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Question about staffing and students. Right now with the gifted program, we bring students together to one site for one day per week. When we, obviously like some of the logistical questions I have about like, how do all the permutations and combinations actually work? And what type of staffing might we anticipate as a recommendation, as a part of this recommendation? And so if you can preview it and if you want to say like, actually, we're working through that and that'll come when it comes? That's fine too, but just wanted to see if you had some early thinking there around probably two questions. How will the staffing work? And then second, we have Lester, which is, might as well be a middle school at this point. And we have some of our smaller schools. And so that creates a challenge around how many students qualify for and then how big those class sizes are for gifted instruction for those 40 minutes a day. So if you can speak to the student experience and then the teacher staffing experience.
Absolutely. So we are looking at what are our current FTE that we have allocated to gifted? And how can we use some of our intervention potential FTE? Because as we've learned, MTSS kind of runs that gamut of being both at the high end and our high achieving students as well as our students who need additional support. If there is space there potentially for some of this, but otherwise using our current FTE and just being very strategic about how we place that across the schools so that staffing does not hinder our accessibility to this program for our students. Additionally, for our student experience, we do recognize that in years, there are large groups that come from one school or another and in some cases, very small groups, but that does fluctuate as we've looked at an analysis of student programming. So what we'll do is really keep an eye on that and continue to analyze our student enrollment and our gifted programming to make some decisions whether it's about our identification and criteria process or if we're looking at different ways to increase programming.
And it'll be a little more on the staffing next week and then kind of as we continue in the next month or two. So we'll continue to revisit that.
And that final recommendation or that recommendation will be in a board memo too for the April board meeting as well.
In terms of when we talk about 40 minutes a day, is that going to be kind of focused as like a 40-minute pullout? Where they're going to have 40 consecutive minutes? Are we looking at it spaced out across a day? And what is the trade-off or sacrifice for students? What are they missing when they're taking that 40 minutes a day? Where does that 40 minutes come from?
Absolutely. So what we are hoping to accomplish with that is that it would be a consistent 40 minutes within their day, trying to find some of that time naturally. A lot of our schools already have intervention blocks built into their schedules. So looking at the potential of that happening for our fourth grade students next year. And then we've had a couple of conversations about what does that look like when fifth grade joins in? Is that happening potentially at the same time with alternate curriculum and across both grade levels? Or is it still a split schedule? So I think these are all kind of what's next questions as we start this initial process of implementation. And so the last request coming out of the curriculum department this evening is an approval for outdoor education experience fees for this school year. So our sixth graders will be taking a single day trip to Laredo Taft in April. We're excited to offer this trip. It is curriculum-based, looking at science, but also team building and kind of that culminating activity for their sixth grade year. A couple of things of note, we have moved away from our multi-day trip to a single day trip. Last year, the students went to Camp Manotoca. This year, again, they are going to Laredo Taft. We are really hoping to finalize a location that is going to be consistent for our students. And in doing that, having the cost be part of our registration moving forward. This is just something that as we have made some different options out there and having some different experiences, we really just aren't, we weren't at a place to add this to the fees for the school year. We are hoping that as we shift to the middle school model, that this trip will become a fifth grade experience. So that means that in this school year 25, 26, this will be a two-grade level experience. Our fifth graders and our sixth graders would be participating. This year, we are asking that the outdoor education fee be set at $50. This is a reduction in cost from last year. That is due to the price of the actual experience at Laredo Taft versus the cost of the experience at Camp Manotoca last year. That is significantly lower than our multi-day excursion, which was over $100. Actually, $165, I believe it was. Any questions?
Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job. All right, we have one item that's a recommendation for action tonight, that's the outdoor education fee. Is there a motion to approve the outdoor education fee for the 23, 24 school year at $50 per student? All right, any discussion on that? All right, Melissa, please call rule.
Number Weiner.
Aye.
Number Doshi.
Aye.
Number Ellis.
Aye.
Number Hannis.
Aye.
Number Harris.
Aye.
Number Hugh.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the outdoor education fee for the 23, 24 school year at $50 per student. That brings us to the discussion portion of the meeting tonight, which is construction alternatives for the referendum. So Dr. Russell?
Thank you. First and foremost, before I get going on the Capitol, I do want to thank our entire curriculum department. Liz, in your first year, you've shown just, you moved on me there, but in your, it's all set. Your first year, you've shown just tremendous leadership. I also want to thank Christine, Sandy and Alenny for all of your leadership, just how prepared you were. I think it really gives our community comfort. First and foremost, we are a learning institution. And so learning should be the biggest thing that we do as a school district. And it was quite impressive just to see all the work that's going on and planned for subsequent years in addition to everything that's going on in our classrooms today. So on behalf of the board and our community, we just want to thank all of you for a job well done. And we're excited for all the things to come. And it's always great when you can see that excitement on our teachers' faces as well. So I'm here tonight to talk about Capitol. I want to recognize some of our partners in the room. We have Jennifer from Huffman and Keel, she's here. We have Amy from White and Company in the back. Ben and Peter from Bulleye and Andrews. I especially want to thank them for sitting through the curricular presentation. And you know, sorry about that, sometimes you guys go first, sometimes you go second. But here we are with the Capitol update. In terms of the Capitol update, what we want to talk to you about today. Every once in a while in a referendum project, we know that we have contingencies. And we have contingencies in case we ever run into a problem and we need to fix something. So for instance, you open up a wall. So we have built-in construction management contingencies in case we find something. Or maybe we forgot to put something in a scope or anything like that. But then we also have an owner's contingency. And an owner's contingency is when the owner, the Board of Education, might choose to add something that might not have been in the regular budget. And so that's what I want to talk to you about today. We are not going to ask you to vote on anything today. Any of the alternatives that we're talking about would come up next week at the regular meeting. So the board can take a week to ask questions, to dive deeper into some of this material. And then some of the alternates that we're talking about won't come till next year or maybe two years down the road depending on where our budget is. But we wanted to make sure that it's on your radar this evening as we talk about that. So first and foremost, I just want to give you a quick update. And our owners representatives will also be here next year, or excuse me, next week, Huffman and Keel to give you a more detailed update on where we're at financially in the referendum. But as of March 4th, we have 68% of the work committed, $143 million to date. That number still is, it's a big number for me to say, 143 million. So as we go through these dollar amounts and we go through quickly, please know that we take these dollars very seriously. This is the biggest commitment our taxpayers have ever made to District 58. And so I never want to appear like I'm glossing over dollar amounts of $143 million because that is a lot of money. We know that the overall budget for this work is about 209.5 million. So we are well on our way to committing almost the entire budget here through the bid process. So some upcoming approvals for work this evening, we're going to ask you primarily to focus on elementary Phase One schools and O'Neill Middle School's library. Why would we combine the library with elementary Phase One? Well, if you walk down the hallway, you notice that the prep work is all done. And O'Neill's hallway contains the library here. And that is something that we need to move on this summer because that's when the library is going to be constructed. And with lead times and furniture, we want to make sure that we get that approval in this evening so we can start ordering those things. Next week, we're going to switch our focus primarily at our middle schools and making sure that we get all the bid work done for our middle schools. And by the end of next week, we'll be at 100% of all of our middle school bids, which is exciting and I can't believe how fast it's going. Next week, we're also going to ask you to consider an alternative for cabling for our Phase One elementary schools and door replacements for our Phase One elementary schools. Why not our middle schools? That work is actually already in the middle school work because the middle schools are so comprehensive and we're touching all parts of those buildings. We've included that, but in the elementary school, because it's primarily secured entrances and office spaces, these would be additions to the elementary schools that we think makes sense here. And again, you'll hear that from our owners representative next week as well. So just a quick overview on where we're at in the budget. We are pretty much on budget, slightly under budget. And that makes me feel very comfortable being this far in with all the committed work that we're still slightly under budget. And to date, we have not touched our owner's contingency. We also have not touched our construction management contingency. Which is good because as we're going into construction, you want to make sure that those are as high as they possibly can be. So total overhead and planning, we're about five thousand dollars over right now. But when you look at the total construction projects, we're about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand under budget. So overall, about a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars under budget for this work. And I do want to comment and thank our team that you see here. We're dealing with some of the trickiest markets and conditions out there economically. When you talk about inflation, supply chain, all those things kind of coming post pandemic. To be able to be that close and not significantly over is certainly exciting work for us and we're glad that we're there. So the other line that you'll see there is owner contingencies. And then we have in parentheses, if alternatives are improved. Currently, right now, we have about ten-point-three in owner's contingency. And if you were to do the things that we're talking about, again, spanned over a few years, that owner contingency would dip down to about eight-point-one million dollars. So you would still have some owner's contingency. And again, that owner's contingency can grow and shrink depending on where we're at with the bid process. So if we're significantly under where our bids are coming in, you'll see that owner's contingency rise. If we're significantly over, you see that owner's contingency dip down. So I may have to phone a friend here and he's right over there, James Ike Miller, on some of this more cabling specific. But what we're asking the board to consider for our elementary schools are network wiring updates. Right now, the total project cost, if we were to go all the way down to where it says the goal. The goal here, what we're talking about with the alternatives, to get five cabling runs per classroom to cover the intercom, that would have one run. That is already included in the construction budget because we're putting intercoms in our schools, new intercoms. We're also asking you to consider putting an additional two in for the phones and two in for the wireless access points that you would see here. Why would we be asking you to do that? Well, currently, the wiring that's in there is CAT five. That was the wiring that came out, you know, twenty-five years ago or plus. As our schools were getting introduced to this new thing called the internet and we had to start wiring our schools. Well, that was the last time that we did our cabling update. And I think we can all agree that the internet has come a long way and requires significant more speed, but also infrastructure behind that. So why would we consider doing this and adding this on in terms of the project cost right now? Well, if we're already opening up the ceilings to put that intercom wire through, we wouldn't want to close those up. And then in subsequent years, come back and open them all up again and pay for that labor. It does make a lot of sense to do, just do this all in one false swoop if you can. So that is something that we're asking the Board of Education to consider. So when we look at this, it's about one-point-six-seven million dollars to do this work. About half of that is already accounted for in the bids that we're going to ask you to approve. So we'd be looking for the board to pick up the second half. In the first phase of schools, that comes out to about six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. That number does get smaller as you go further because we have less schools and less square footage. And then also some of that money is eratable. And so we would be looking to cash in some of our E-rate funds with this to the tune of about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So I want to pause there specifically about cabling and ask if there are any questions. I would say that this is not necessarily an alternate nice to have. This is something that I really do feel is important for us to make sure that this work gets done inside of our schools. Because you're either going to have to do it now or do it, you know, in the future, pretty soon in the future. And so we're recommending that while the ceilings and everything are open, we go ahead and take this opportunity. It would require you though to dip into that owner's contingency. We recognize though dipping into the owner's contingency before we've started construction might give the board some pause. It certainly gives us some pause as well. So one of the things that we've asked our owners rep and our construction management team to do is to speak with you next week about how they feel about the contingencies. Where we're at and whether or not they're comfortable. And we have spoken to them. At this point, the construction management team feels like their contingencies are in a really good spot. They're anticipating giving us a rebate back on those. They can never say for sure. But they feel pretty comfortable with that number. And so long as the construction management team feels comfortable with that number, then our owners rep feels comfortable as well. But again, the caution I would always have to give a board is until we start opening everything up, you just never know. But we have done a lot of pre-work to hopefully, you know, forecast or be proactive about that. So any questions for James or myself on the cabling idea?
Clarification, I think I understand, but clarification on the total projected cost, is that for all three phases of elementary?
Great question. That is for, that is your all-in cost over the next three years. That one-point-six-seven for all three phases of that. The biggest chunk would be that first phase in our schools. And again, that rebate coming from the hundred and ninety-two thousand, that would come out of the total as well.
And then I know you and I were speaking about this earlier today. I mean, that you spent a lot of time on the phone sorting out the eight-hundred-and-thirty-five. But what, I just don't, I don't get it. I don't get like how we have had exactly fifty percent already budgeted for this. And why, why was, why was, why is it that way? Why do we have half, half the amount already budgeted when we knew the total amount? Why didn't we, I guess, why don't we do the whole thing originally when we budgeted this? Why did we not like look? What, so I mean, I just don't get the numbers and why they, why they, why we only budget half of it?
So the numbers are based off of the square footage of the buildings, right? And so as you go in, especially in Phase Three, remember we have three schools. Elsie, Arab, Bel Air don't have the same level of comprehensive intercom systems that you would find in a more traditional school setup. So, so that's why that number decreases as you go further in. Why wasn't this all just in the original scope of the work? If you remember, when we had to set this dollar amount for a hundred and seventy-nine million and then figure how we're going to get to the escalating costs, supply chain, inflation, all of that. We had to really stick to the script and say, okay, what did the community approve here? This is all certainly within White's comprehensive report when you're talking about adding things into the school. But when we looked at the elementary schools and we looked at, okay, what are we calling for? We're calling for new intercoms. We're calling for new clocks. So when we looked at the elementary schools, we said, okay, what is the bare minimum? And then what would we have to go back and ask for an alternative if the bids were starting to come in favorable where we could consider alternatives? So that's primarily why it wasn't included, simply because it was out of the original scope that the, the board got the community to approve.
So it's just a coincidence that it's exactly fifty percent?
Yeah, so when we look at, these are estimates, right? And so it is.
When we say Phase One amount for board consideration, is that Phase One being the first four schools or Phase One being something else?
Phase One being the first four schools. The reason why we're only focusing in on Phase One right now is because we have an alternate bid out for that. And that's what you would be approving next week at the board meeting. We would then come back to you, once we do the Phase Two schools, bid that out with an alternate, then come back to you with that dollar amount. So the total cost is a projection where the Phase One amount is more set, if that makes sense. And those are for those four elementary schools. Again, because the middle school is just a comprehensive, complete overhaul, that's why that's included in the middle school and not in the elementaries.
And I think just to note, one of the reasons why we're talking the big number two is, once we commit to the Phase One schools, we're based. We're voting on that one because we can actually go to bid now, but we're mentally committing to. Right, we're committing ourselves to that, that eight, additional eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand.
But the board would always reserve the right to reject a further bid down the road. I would concur with Darren when he's saying, once you make the decision for one, we wanted to make sure you knew what you were getting into with the second and third phase as well.
To make sure I understand, so the first four schools are going to cost an increase of about six-eighty-three. The remaining seven schools are going to be the difference between the eight-thirty-five and the six-eighty-three?
That's correct.
And that's just.
James, go ahead.
I guess help me understand the seven schools, less than a quarter of the budget?
Yeah, go ahead, James.
I mean, we may be saying the same thing. One nuance is the six-eighty-three is the total cost for the proposal we have for the Phase One work. What was in the budget was three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand of that amount. So the increase for this year for Phase One, I would say is closer to three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Six-eighty-three is after one-point-six, not after eight-thirty-five.
Six-eighty-three is the total cost, three-hundred-and-fifty-three was budgeted.
Okay, so Phase One is the middle schools and the four elementary?
Just Phase One elementary. What James is saying, and when we present this next week, we're trying to show you the total cost all in. There is. So in the Phase One schools that you see up here, Bullion Andrews has already included some of that amount in their budget, right? We're also then saying we need to make up the difference. So of that six-hundred-and-eighty-three, three-hundred-and-fifty-three is already in the budget amount that you're going to approve in the bid. So that's the difference that we're asking you to approve.
It originally budgeted for two cable runs. We're going from two cable runs to five. So there's additional three cable runs. We gotta, that's the additional money?
The six-eighty-three is out of the one-point-six-seven, not out of the eight-thirty-five. So this, it's not really six-eighty-three that's up for board consideration. It'd be three-something.
The difference between those two amounts, correct.
And I think we put that on the slide because that's the number you will see on three-eleven on the bid. The proposal from the vendor is first, six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars.
Even though half of that is in the budget?
That's what we're paying the vendor, the, the, it's more than, it's, well, his budget was three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So we're asking to spend more than what we're budgeting.
What we will do for you next week in the agenda is we will spell out of that total amount, how much is already included in the bids that you're approving? And then how much is left that we would have to take out of our owner's contingency, okay? We'll spell that out very clearly for everyone as we go forward. But again, the rationale behind this decision is you're already opening up this space and paying for the labor to open up the space, close it back up. It makes a lot of sense if you're able to, to then go the extra step and do this so you don't have to two or three or four years down the road, pay for that same labor all over again.
So on a technical level, I, just as a general feeling on the board, the ask really here is to take an additional eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars out of our, our contingency that we have to do this additional work throughout our elementary schools. So that we don't have to do this work a few years down the road, which would then make it significantly more than eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. So it, it is a cost savings for us in the long run, but we do have to start dipping into our contingency funds. Now, this is one of the alternatives that we talked about early on. You know, there was some stuff that, that got punted, some of the lighting projects that we wanted to do. Doors, which I think is coming up for conversation here next. And so these are some of the things now. Now that we've started the bidding process and we've had an opportunity to talk with our representatives, there's a comfort level in being able to commit to it now. And this is an, this one in particular is really important to make a decision now before we start the construction in our Phase One schools.
What would be helpful is kind of a list of the alternative, other alternatives that could potentially come up?
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna.
I know we have doors. I saw some of it, but there could be other, right? Like this, I'll use a colloquial from personal life, like my husband's a carpenter. He redid our house. It's a nineteen-oh-seven house. And he said a lot of, well, might as well. While we're here, I might as well take this bathroom out also, and then I might as well, and I might as well. So I just would like to know all the might as wells.
Yes.
You know, like this is one, but are we giving up on another might as well down the road, right? Or are we, are we, you know, is this a, you know, I think your point to nice to have versus, you know, must have. You know, CAT five versus CAT six E. What, what real, what real negative impact are we putting on, you know, longevity in, in reality, right? It's an internal cabling system except for the wireless access points, right? The other is all internal cabling, so.
So, so I think to kind of explain the impact, I mean, it's in the version slides that we were done. At twenty-five years old, the industry recommended standard for copper cabling is around twenty-five years. Copper lasts a long time. The shielding doesn't, eventually shielding will start to fail. And so you just, you can't predict what it will. So you can try to revive others and increase standards. The other thing we're up against is speeds. CAT five E is rated for around like two decades, rated for a hundred meg. We're pushing more across that now and it works, but you know, it's not the recommended standard. The other thing I'll throw at you that just, that has been, we've struggled with the whole time we've been here. But this room is, you know, we rewired this room when we started with a professional learning space. When you walk in most of our classrooms, you see radio stuck on the wall. Why are they on the wall? Because that's what the cable was put in the nineties before wireless was even a thing. And I saw where we could pull the cable up, stick it in the wall really easy. It's meant to be in the center of the space. So this will allow us to modernize our spaces. And you know, we've been able to make it work. That's how we do things in this group of behavior, where I think a resource will make it work. But it is far from the industry standard. As far as the, the wants and the, and the needs, you know, it's hard to decide what's a need. But to show you that we are trying, when you see the, when you see the cabling proposal next week, you'll notice there were two alternates. There was an alternate A and an alternate B. The, the, the alternate B was for two additional cables. And when we did the design product, we said, what are all the possible needs? So one, one was for projectors, to put CAT six, cabling into projectors. And another was to put CAT six cabling into the Apple TVs for the streaming. So we decided with all the budgeting challenges that those were the ones we're going to sacrifice on those. Because we really want to prioritize in wiring for the radios and for the phones, which we do as part of the outcome. So we are trying to make the tough decisions on, on the wants for some of these.
So we do have more runs than what we're proposing to replace?
Are you saying what's currently in each classroom versus what's in? We currently have about six per classroom that were installed back when we were desktops using the printers.
I'm getting it through and now I'm getting technical, but just curiosity, is it through smurf tubing or no smurf tubing? Are we using something, you know, that blue tube?
It will, it will, it will depend. I think some will just be in J-hooks. It depends on where we do this. I think we have different spaces.
I'll look at it whenever we get the, the bid. I'll look at the detail when we get the bid. I just wanted to know if you knew off the top of your, because you said the sheathing. So that tubing is basically like a conduit for that kind of stuff, so.
The story of this three-year cabling through J-hooks is allowable.
So J-hooks, no external tubing?
Correct.
To protect the.
And if any of you are adhering, you can get a kind of a sneak peek because the ceiling tiles are down and you can see how it does, it's currently hung there. Which they've been great about, not touch them. We're very happy with that.
I've been doing this the whole time.
So again, the point of this is just introducing this to you tonight. We appreciate the questions. Please keep the questions coming. We appreciate the feedback on the format, how you want us to break out the dollars so that you can make the best educated decision next week after you hear from our owners representative. Next one that I want to touch on is door replacement at the elementary schools. Again, at the middle schools, you're talking about such a comprehensive overhaul that all those are going to get taken care of. When you're looking at the elementary schools, this room is a great example of what we need to go to. So this was an addition that was built in ninety-one. And what you see on here are door handles, not door knobs. Door knobs are not ADA compliant. And a big piece of the referendum was making our schools fully accessible for all students and all adults to be in line with the ADA. So what that means is we have to replace the old door knobs that you would see with ADA compliant door handles. So over the summer, when we go to Phase One elementary schools and then Phase Two and Phase Three, again, Bel Air and Elsie don't really have that many doors. So this isn't a big lift at those schools. That's why we see that dollar amount decrease. But we do have to replace the old door knobs with handles in order to be fully compliant. That's part of not only the referendum work, but as you start to touch spaces, you must bring them up to code and that's another requirement. One of the things that is, would be an alternate is as you're replacing in the schools, those old door knobs. The alternate would be to go ahead and replace the entire door. Several of our doors at the elementary school are way past their life. And so it does make a lot of sense if you can afford it while you're taking the door off, taking the handle off, to just go ahead and replace that door with a new, modern door with new handles. So you're not in a situation where you pay somebody to do all that work and then have to come back and redo it again when they switch a door out later on. Hillcrest is a great example of this. If you were to walk through Hillcrest right now, you would see a lot of doors again. I want to commend Kevin, our custodial staff, Jeff Newstadt. They do a great job of extending the life on things. But several of our doors are well past their usefulness and they do need to be replaced. Why wasn't this in the, the budget for the referendum? Again, that's one of those decisions you have to make, saying ADA is a must. The door might not be able to make it through. So what would it cost you? So what would it cost you if you were to look at the total replacement for all of the doors in the elementary school? So we'd be looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately to do this. Why does it cost more in phase one? Couple of reasons, remember phase one, you have four schools. You have four schools in the second phase as well. Phase three is very minimal, because you're only talking about Pierce Downer at that point. Remember, a third of Pierce Downer has already been upgraded when you put on, uh, the addition several years ago. So phase one and phase two are your, your biggest costs that you're going to have. So for phase one, we'd be looking at three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, um, to, to do that work. Um, in the approval, we would need that approval next week to go ahead and do that. But as Darren shared about the cabling, you know, if you make that decision for phase one, you're then gonna have to follow that up in phase two or phase, and phase three again. Not necessarily that you would absolutely have to, because let's say we did run into it, though, um, and, and had a problem. At least you're a third of the way done, and then you would just have to really focus that in your capital plan, uh, moving forward. My recommendation is, though, so you're not paying double and triple the labor on the same thing, is if you can dip in the owner, owner's contingency for doors, I think that is, uh, money well spent. Because you're not only avoiding that double charge on labor, you're enhancing your security as you get better doors, right? And more ADA, uh, compliant. So, next time you're in one of our elementary schools, please walk down and take a look at the doors or as you're leaving tonight. You'll kind of get a sense of what I'm talking about, you know, wood doors, that some of that framing comes off and, and things like that. And it just makes a lot of sense to replace those if we're able, uh, to do that. And so that's something that we would ask you to consider, uh, next week as well. And you'd only be voting on the phase one amount, and then phase two would come next year when you're doing the phase two bids.
Is it doors and frames?
But, and we're not gonna replace the frame unless we have to, so excuse me for, for mentioning door frames. Um, we would just primarily be replacing the doors if a frame becomes necessary, then of course we would have to do that as well. Most of our frames are in really good shape, though.
Just a quick note to the, the entire board. Uh, normally, when I bring up anything that's gonna come up for a vote, one of the key things that's important to me is that we have a discussion period of time. First, before we do that, uh, we are on a relatively tight schedule if we want to get these things done. So this time around, we have one week until our next board meeting. So while there'll be some presentations there, I want to make sure that your questions get answered. So if you don't have them today, but they come up during the week, uh, everybody's assured me that they will make time to make sure that any of those questions get answered. I just want to make sure that we're, we're able to be prepared, uh, for that meeting. I normally like to give us a full month to do that, we just didn't, we didn't have that, that timeframe here. And this bid work does have to get bid out, uh, in time for us to be able to get that summer work done.
And to Darren's point, the reason why this is kind of a unique turnaround, and we wanted to put that on here tonight, is remember, those bids were just finalized. And so now that we have the bids, now we can go back and tell you, this is what it's gonna cost. But literally last week, we were just finishing those bids. And so it's just one of those things, but at least we wanted to make sure that we gave you some daylight be, uh, between giving you the information and then asking you to vote on that. Okay, a couple of other alternatives, Melissa, you had asked, so what, what else are you thinking about as you come through? Well, one of the things that we are thinking about, uh, having many conversations, is about elementary lunch. And for some schools, switching to elementary lunch is a very easy lift. Probably the easiest lift is Henry Puffer. Why is Henry Puffer? Well, when we incorporated Henry Puffer, they already had their own lunch service. So Henry Puffer is not gonna cost a, a lot to go ahead and fix, because they have the sinks, they have the wiring, it, it's already in there. Where you start to look at some of our older schools, like a Highland, now you're kind of sitting there going, well, all of our schools have some kind of space off the gym, but is the one at Highland really conducive? Or, you know, Pierce Downers has a relatively bigger size when you look at some of the schools, but there's not the electrical in there, we've got to do some work in sinks. And so, looking at this, um, what we have mapped out, should the board approve elementary lunch, I want to make sure you understand, if you approve elementary lunch, which would be next fall, then this is a dollar amount that's also gonna be attached to that to bring up those elementary spaces to where you need to be. It's not just about serving the lunch at the elementary schools, you gotta be able to heat it when it gets there. You have to be able to sanitize everything and do all that other stuff. Again, some schools, it's a little easier. What, what are some other schools where it might be easier? Indian Trail has a larger space because they have a multipurpose room. Kingsley has a larger space because they have a multipurpose room. But some of the other spaces, Whittier's a good example, Highland, Pierce, it's gonna take some creativity. Why are we waiting till next year to do that? Well, the middle school cafeterias aren't going to be done until the summer of twenty-five. So we wouldn't have the ability to serve lunch now anyway. So this is something that we can wait on, but we wanted to just make you aware, this is on our radar. So we would be seeking approval, if the board approves elementary lunch, and to be able to serve hot lunch, then this will come, uh, after that. So that's another thing that we have to map out in contingency, uh, if we want to do that work.
And that would be all eleven schools done at the same time?
That is correct. So the, the plan would be next summer, in the summer of twenty-five, to go back into the phase one schools, do the phase two schools when we're in there, and then do, um, the phase three schools as well, all within the summer of twenty-five. We do believe that's possible after spending time with our architect and our construction management team and our owner's representatives talking through what that would, uh, look like.
Just to understand how this might look for some of our schools that aren't currently equipped, so I know Highland relatively well. Would this require us to repurpose existing space within the four walls of the building? Or, what would that look like?
Yeah, so again, you, if you think of the, the PE space, and then next to the PE space, there is a small kitchen area, right? So what that would look like is upgrading the electrical. It would look like adding sinks to those spaces, so you can do the sanitation work that's necessary, and then bringing in warming machines in order to, uh, warm that. And so depending on the size that you have, will determine the equipment that you need to purchase and what that looks like in those spaces. Um, it could require in certain times where you have to knock something out and add a little space to that. And again, that's what the design process will go, will go through. Uh, and we're just beginning phase two design process, so that's something that we'll design for the board. We will show you, hey, this is what we're thinking as we go through those individual spaces, just like we have done for phase one, and have just started the process for phase two. And again, some schools, you can see it perfectly, other schools, um, we're still, that's where Amy works her magic and, uh, figures all this out for us.
And this would be one we would decide on?
Correct, this is next year.
Not next week.
That is correct.
No, but this is giving you that visibility you were asking about.
Correct.
So what I'm, what I would be wondering in this instance is, you know, the comparison against this, against the budget for providing the hot lunch, fees for hot lunch, et cetera.
So that.
How that whole budget ties together, cost to build out, cost to family, cost to provide.
And this one, for example, will take into account, once we go national school lunch program, that actually brings in more revenue for us, all that, those pieces tie together as well.
What's your initial investment?
Budget that we'd look at for this program, including construction plus.
That is exactly correct. So you'd be, well, we would first look at some of the money that we saved from COVID, how do you offset this? Then we would be looking at, if you do NSLP, what is your anticipated, um, revenue that you're bringing in? You've got to throw that back into the food program, what that would look like, and that is exactly what we'll continue to work through.
Thank you.
Next is, there's no dollar amount attached to this next one. And, and there's a good reason for that. These are furniture enhancements or replacements. When we are renovating spaces, we're building new spaces, right? So in a little bit, you're gonna be asked to approve the furniture for O'Neill Library. That's a complete renovation and an overhaul, right? All of those spaces in the referendum are getting new furniture. You'll see that FFNE budget in there. And our partners at Huffman and Keel are working through that process with our partner Henrickson on that. One of the things, though, we would like to do is either down the road or with excess referendum money, if we have that then, is those spaces that aren't getting a significant amount of work. Perhaps they're just getting a new univent in their room, or maybe new flooring. Um, would we have the ability to go back and add furniture to those spaces to match the furniture that we've just put in the new spaces? The reason this is to be determined is this is certainly on our long-term plan, but we don't want to go through the process yet of planning and, and designing and all that, and spending all that money if at the end of the day, we are not gonna have the funds to be able to do that. So you can order furniture at any time, so for us, this is more like a year three thing to see where we're coming up at the end. If we are gonna have money, the good news is we'll already have the design work done. We would then just be able to retrofit that into our existing spaces. But we want to be very careful as we look at that, because again, that's not necessarily even budgeted for the middle schools. It's a big, when you think about all the instructional spaces in our school system, we might be able to do a chunk of it, um, and then have to just keep adding this into the long-term capital plan for our district. And so, just wanted to put that up there. I, I don't have a dollar amount for you, but certainly furniture enhancement is something that we're gonna continue, uh, to look at as we go through this process. So again, without the furniture, the anticipated impact that we're talking about is about two point three million dollars. And that's why if you go back to that capital expense, you would see that come out of the owner's, uh, contingency. And as we prepare for next week, we will certainly take your feedback. We'll separate those numbers for you a little further, so that everybody knows exactly, uh, what you'd be committing to, not only in year one, but in phase two and then phase three as well.
Because the bids are coming in, in the total amount, I think it'd be good to make sure that everyone, prior to that meeting, has an opportunity to see the numbers with and without the additions, just so that they, they have a better visibility. You and I have talked about it several times, I feel like I can look at those numbers and just see them, but I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to see that, so that we, uh, can easily make that, that decision.
Absolutely. And, uh, you know, Melissa, to, this is our best guess in terms of where we're at right now. What, what are we thinking might pop up? Um, there will be other little things as we go through. So for instance, this room that you're standing in right now, we, the hallway is gonna be tiled. We have two options for these rooms, one would be to just re-carpet it, the other one would be to put the tile in. We obviously would like to go with the tile if we can, have that consistency throughout it. So those are other alternatives that we're looking at as we go through, but we would share that with the board when we ask you to approve the bids. Hey, these rooms are gonna be carpeted, or these rooms are gonna be tiled. So we will let you know as we go through in some of these smaller ones as well.
I'm more worried about the big things than to open walls.
We, we are as well. The good news is, though, again, one of the reasons, um, we have hired Huffman and Keel, Bullies and Andrew, and White and Company, is they have been through our schools, they've been scanning our schools. White and Company knows every inch of our schools. Why, I'm never saying that they can predict what's gonna happen when you open a wall. We've all run old stuff in our own lives, and you get surprises, right? And again, that's why we're, we're very happy we haven't had to touch any of those contingencies up to this point. But know that there has been a lot of pre, or proactive work done in our schools, and a lot of the people who are bidding on these projects have done their due diligence and walked through the schools and opened up the ceiling tiles and looked around corners, uh, just to see if there would be any surprises, um, for them as well.
And would it be accurate to say that the approach we took was to put the, the buildings that we were the most concerned about up front?
Yeah, that's a very.
Get a front load of those?
Yeah, thank you for that, Darren. Um, again, as we set this up, when we were trying to figure out, okay, who's phase one, who's phase two, who's phase three? The buildings that we knew needed the most work are the ones that we were the most concerned about. We intentionally tried to put those in phase one. The reason for that is, we knew that if those are gonna be our most expensive schools, we want to do those right away so we don't let inflation and, uh, cost escalation continue on those schools, because they are bigger dollar amounts. The, Whittier's a perfect example of that, right? Uh, Whittier has a lot of unknowns just because the age of the building, that's why we wanted to put that in the first phase, um, so that way we could, we could knock that out right away and then not have that escalate, uh, down the road. The one thing that I want to continue to remind the board that we are still very concerned with, um, and we are at the mercy of Commonwealth Edison. So we have done everything that we need to do for our transformers. But we could have a situation where you have everything in the schools ready to go, and all we're waiting for is that transformer to be hooked up. Why are we at the mercy of ComEd? Um, they do not necessarily communicate back with their customers after you've filled everything out, you've done all the paperwork. And what we're really waiting for ComEd is to say, yes, we see Whittier, we see Highland, we see Hillcrest, we see your phase one schools, here's when we're delivering your transformer. Still haven't gotten that word yet, even though we've done everything on time and everything that we're supposed to do. So every once in a while, a board member will ask me, okay, Kevin, what are you concerned about? That is the biggest concern, it remains the biggest concern, I shared that at the last meeting. We are doing everything we can to get in touch with ComEd and to make sure that that will happen this summer. We have no indication that it won't. We also don't have any indication that it will at this point, and that's what's kind of keeping us up at night.
I don't know if any legislator will touch it, but if they're willing to touch it, will they advocate on our behalf?
Yes, we have reached out to our legislators. Um, your point about legislators not wanting to touch anything with ComEd is, is very well received by them, uh, for obvious, you know, reasons in the state. Um, but we are also working with the Village of Downers Grove, because they have extensive contacts with Commonwealth Edison to say, hey, can you put us in touch with the right person? So we are trying to hit every lever, um, we can. Again, we have no reason to believe that it won't happen. We would just really feel a lot better if we had that indicator that, yes, we know, we see you were coming on these particular, uh, days. But if any of you have ever dealt with ComEd, um, it can be a frustrating experience, and we're there right now as well. Okay? Our groups here, did I miss anything, or misspeak? All right, and again, I want to thank Kevin Barto for his leadership in this area. On the amount of things that Kevin is, Kevin is juggling on top of just his normal day-to-day job. It, it's quite impressive, and, and he's done a really, really nice job balancing all of these things. Um, again, on top of managing thirteen aging schools, so thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the construction consent agenda.
Darren, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
I should have brought this up earlier, and I apologize for not, but typically, we don't vote on anything until we do public comment. So can I, do I motion to table that, lay that on the table temporarily while we do public comment?
That'd be no problem, yep.
Do we need to motion, or we just do a scope?
So what you should do is, um, you should make a motion to move public comment ahead of the, um.
I'm, I'm moved to move public comment, uh, up in the agenda, uh, ahead of the construction consent agenda.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board. Um, issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas, uh, or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. The board has allotted thirty minutes for public comment this evening. If necessary, uh, we ask that you keep your, um, comments to a three-minute limit to allow for everyone the opportunity to speak. At this time, it doesn't look like I've received any cards. Is there a member of the public that would like to step up the podium and give a public comment at this time? Can everyone run up at once? All right. All right, that brings us then to the construction consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, and is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda consisting of phase one elementary bid, group number three, uh, furniture design and services contract, and the O'Neill Library furniture purchase?
Second.
All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Number Weiner.
Aye.
Number Doshi.
Aye.
Number Ellis.
Aye.
Number Hannis.
Aye.
Number Harris.
Aye.
And member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the construction, uh, consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. Couple of announcements, uh, Wednesday, March the sixth, at three forty-five PM, the Legislative Committee will meet here at the O'Neill Middle School. And then Friday, the, uh, March eighth, at seven AM, the Financial Advisory Committee will meet. And then Monday, March eleventh, at seven PM, we'll have our next regular board meeting, that'll be back at the Dennis Grove Village Hall. All right, the board will now move, uh, now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the collective bargaining negotiation matters between a public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees? That's five ILCS one twenty-two C two.
So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carried?